At this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order of the December 29th, 2020 North Country Board of Supervisors Meeting, our last meeting of 2020. So good riddance to 2020, and we certainly hoping for better things in 2021. Before we get started on the agenda items, I just want to touch on something that happened over the weekend. Pottstown area is a small community made up of municipalities just like us. And when one of those municipalities suffers a loss, I think as good neighbors, we need to express our our condolences and our thoughts and our prayers and I was talking specifically of West Potts Grove. We've lost their police chief over the weekend suddenly. Who he passed away on Sunday. Just can't imagine what the family's going through and what West Potts Grove is going through in. His name was Matt Stofflin. He was police chief for several years, a police officer with West Potts Grove since I believe 2007. And Matt, maybe you can say a couple of words to me, he. I'm sure you have worked with them over the years as we do have a mutual aid agreement with West Potts Grove. And I remember back in 2008, I believe it was when Josh Schwartz passed away. West Potts Grove was there for us when we needed him. And maybe you just can speak to what's happened in the past couple of days and. You know, what assistance we can provide West Potts Grove.
Certainly, yeah, I I knew Chief Stofflet ever since he came on board in West Potts Grove and. You know, just working with him over the years, he was there as a as a backup for me as well as I going over there for him. A great guy, good guy to work with. I was totally shocked to hear about his passing over the weekend and. I said it's still sinking in. But a very good guy. I spoke to him. Quite a few times recently with him being chief over there, just getting advice from him and. Just hearing his side on different issues. So he was a great resource for me and I certainly miss him for that. I have reached out to West Potts Grove a couple of times and asked them. If you know, to let us know if we can help them in any way. Currently Montgomery County is has has already set up officers from Montgomery County to to assist. Covering calls in West Potts Grove here for the next few days so that the West Potts Grove Police Officers can can take a few days and just kind of recover from everything and try to move forward. But yes, I have let them know that we are there for them in any way and. You know, more than likely, there will be some type of service that's provided and we will certainly be represented there.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. You have the board support, whatever what West Potts Grove needs, you know, please provide. Whatever we can do. Don't know what services would look like certainly now. But if they need any kind of coverage or assistance, just let them know we're here for them.
Will do. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Moving on to the agenda, just want to introduce who we have here on this meeting, myself, Jim Marks is chairman. Spencer Claypool is here as the vice chairman, joined by supervisors Harvey Greenwall, Rebecca Elliott and Rick Sheeler. Our township manager is President Erica Bador. Our township solicitor is here, Dan Sager. So with that, to my fellow board members, we have the meeting minutes of December 14th. We're in your packet. Do I have any comments or corrections on those minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 14, 2020?
I'll make the motion.
Spencer made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rebecca seconded all in favor.
I.
I. And the minutes are approved. Bills, we have unpaid bills totaling $20,663. And have a list of pay bills and payroll totaling $98,824. Do I have any comments or questions on the bills?
The only comment I would have or a question I should say is that we're starting to get a number of invoices related to COVID. As far as cleaning and that type of thing, do we know yet if there's going to be any reimbursement either state or federal? To cover any of the costs?
Yes, we are keeping track of all of our COVID expenses. And yes, that we had a recent issue with cleaning and supplies and that kind of thing, which we're keeping track of. We have to get to a certain level of those expenses in order to be actually eligible for reimbursement. And so we're going to check with the county on that. We were getting closer, but which I know seems. You know, that's a difficult thing to have to track that, but know that that's available and you have to get to a certain level of expenses for it to be eligible for reimbursement, but. We'll certainly keep tabs on that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Are expenses on a fiscal year or an annual year? Would they have the expenses have to start over again in 2021? Or are they cumulative?
Rebecca, that's a good question. I will check into that. Thank you.
Good.
Any comments from the public? Copy of the bills were posted to the website over the weekend. If anybody has a question. Please unmute yourself, identify yourself and ask your question. Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to pay the $20,663 and acknowledge the $98,824 of payroll and paid items since the last meeting.
So moved.
We're making motion, made the motion Harvey seconded all in favor.
I.
I. And the bills are acknowledged and paid. Any questions on the developers bills? Hearing none. We do have a presentation tonight. Erica, why don't you do the intro and then we can bring Paul in to give his presentation?
Sounds good. Paul Robinson is the senior managing consultant for the Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust and PFM, Associate with PFM, Public Financial Management. And I had certainly reviewing where investments stand for the township, we had a number of CDs mature. And upon discussion, given the market conditions because of COVID-19 and a lot of different variables at play. The board had provided guidance, let's look at reinvesting that money into one-year CDs. Well, looking at doing that and actually moving forward is actually more difficult. The more time that goes on, the more the market for those available CDs has really shrunken and decreased. So we're looking at other options and also just trying to remain conservative, give it, give the the market some time as well. But I thought that Paul is extremely insightful about really where things stand right now. And we have a number of investments with our open space Act 209 funds that are held at Pliggett. And he can speak to also what are referred to as Act 10 Investments. And this is a new series of options available to municipalities that are a little bit different than the traditional certificate of deposit program. So he can speak to that. I know that I shared some of this information also with our open space review board. Since there's quite a stake in terms of the the level of funds that we have held and invested. So Paul, without further ado, you have been in the thick of things. If you could speak to that and certainly if you like, I do have your presentation. I could share my screen, but if you want to speak to certain points, that's certainly fine, too.
And I know you have a busy agenda and I'll try to keep this to a minimal. I did forward to to Erica a small PowerPoint presentation. It'll probably be just as easy to have her forward that to you all after the meeting. So that you can have it to digest and review after after my short conversation this evening. But as Erica referenced. The township historically has invested for their shorter term investment options FDIC insured CDs. They are still an option. However, what the township needs to recognize at this point is the the banking industry is really flush with cash. So there is really no need or no desire from the financial institutions to literally get your money so that they can loan that money out. To give a couple examples, Pliggett itself does have our own CD program of which we work with. Depends on the day, anywhere from 32 to 200 plus banks nationally. Not just regionally in Pennsylvania, not even in Pennsylvania, but literally throughout the United States. And as of right now, you know, the very best that someone could get in CDs with the dollar amounts that the township is looking at is somewhere about between seven and nine basis points. Now to explain for you all, there are 100 basis points in 1%. So you're getting less than 1/10 of a percent earnings. I hate to say, be the bearer of bad news this evening, you know, the entire market is almost at zero interest rates. I'm sure we all watch the news. We all pay attention that our treasuries rates are quote trading at zero. When treasuries are trading at zero, it truly limits what local governments in Pennsylvania are permitted to invest in. And so you need to recognize that right now, the CDs through local banks, even though you may see rates posted on their 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 advertising. It usually applies to individual CDs, not when they're dealt with through a governmental entity. And they are at a $250,000 threshold, which you have several funds that would well exceed that $250,000 threshold. So Erica and I had been talking at a couple of other meetings. With regards to two new for two funds that Pliggett has, one is our Pliggett Prime Fund. It is to simplify it, it is like a savings account. It allows you to withdraws per month and the rate can change. We also have a fund called the Pliggett Term Fund. That is more on the lines of what you all would think of as CDs because it has a fixed term. Meaning you need to invest X amount of time out. And with that, you're guaranteed a a set yield on that investment. Both of these funds are made up of Pennsylvania Act 10 Investment Options. Now that's the next question will be, well, what is Pennsylvania Act 10? In 2016, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania did did adopt Act 10. Which allowed for three new investment options for local governments in Pennsylvania, commercial paper. Bankers' acceptance and negotiable certificates of deposit. Prior to Pennsylvania Act 10, Pennsylvania had one of the and still does have one of the most conservative investment options for local governments in the United States. Prior to Act 10, you're allowed to invest in US treasuries. You're allowed to invest in federal agencies. However, in the the recession, shall I say, of 2008, the federal government decided to cut back on the inventory of agencies. And that was where historically local governments, Pennsylvania and other places would get a better return on their investment was federal agencies. However, that inventory has been reduced. Therefore, the opportunity to invest in agencies has has diminished significantly since 2008. You also had the bank deposits, the CDs that you're accustomed to. And also in Pennsylvania, you are permitted to invest in general obligation debt of either the the US government or excuse me, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania government and or either local governments. As well as your last option would be to invest in money market funds and or local government investment funds such as as Pliggett. So these new investment options, commercial paper, bankers' acceptance and negotiable certificates of deposit. What this provides you, the township, is literally just a little bit more of an opportunity to get something on the return on your investments.
Thank you.
Just as an example, right now, our Pliggett Prime Program, which again is like a savings account, would be offering you a eight basis points or a 0.08% return on your investment. With regards to CD or excuse me, with regards to the term program, it would depend on the duration or the length that you would do to your investments. But looking at the recent rates, anywhere from 90 days up to a year would be somewhere between 12 basis points and 15 basis points. I ran a couple of numbers earlier today. And if you were to invest in CDs in the dollar amounts that you're looking at that have been that have matured and other liquid funds that you're looking to invest in for the 2021 year. You would probably be looking at, I hate to say, somewhere between six and nine basis points max, locking that up for an entire year. I would encourage the township to take a look at the use of the Pliggett Term and or the Pliggett Prime or a combination of both. For at least the short term. 2020, as we all are aware, is a year that we will never forget. I am hopeful. I am somewhat of an optimist. Erica knows me pretty well. Most of the time, I'm not necessarily the biggest optimist. But I do believe that things are going to are going to significantly improve in the latter part of the of 2021. And with that, I would probably even take a look at lathering out some of your investments. So some of them may need maturing in June, July, August, and then some other your other investments maturing later on in the year, October, November, December. So you can reinvest hopefully at a at a higher yield. I would be glad to answer questions regarding to these investment options. And and answer any questions in which you may have with regards to the Act 10 Investments.
If I have any questions? For Paul?
The one question I would have is that is any of the funds that you recommended have FDIC insurance or they any guarantees?
They are, well, number one, so you fully understand, the FDIC insurance is there because of the fact that what a bank does is you give them your money and they lend that money out. So that money is literally physically not there for you to take back in case you want to. And if there is an issue and or that bank fails, that money is not there. We do not lend money out to people. We take what you in what you have given to us and we invest those funds in what is permitted to be invested by second-class townships in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. They are not guaranteed by the federal government. Part of that reasoning is is one, we don't lend the money out. Two, excuse me. We're actually under the Securities Exchange Commission. And in my opinion, it has a greater oversight than the banking commissions. We are required to do what they say, an NAV, a net asset value of all our funds on a daily basis. And do an in-depth analysis on a weekly basis. So what that means is that we have to do quote stress tests and other type of calculations to ensure that if every single investor in the trust would come to us and say, I need my money back, then we would be able to do so. And under SEC regulations, if that was not able to occur, it's what they call in the industry breaking the buck. If your dollar that you give to us becomes valued at less than 99.98 cents, we're required to notify you in advance. So it's not what usually happens with the FDIC, the bank fails. Then the federal government comes in and says, let's see what we can get your money and we can get your money up to the principal of that $250,000. So a long story is no, we do not have a federal guarantee. I think our requirements are even stricter than that. We have been around Pliggett for over 40 years, have had no issues. PFM is the asset manager or the investment advisor for Pliggett Trust. As we are for 15 other state pools located throughout the United States. And we've been doing investments of these types for well over 40 years and have had, you know, no issues. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Just to follow up with that is what is the level of security of the assets then? You said you made a comment about being very secure and so forth, but.
Well, these are these, all our investments are invested only in what you, under Pennsylvania code, second-class code, et cetera, allow you to invest in. I will say when the state adopted Pennsylvania Act 10. I thought they did a very good job on making sure that the investments were safe. We all recognize, particularly myself and all of us at Pliggett, is we're dealing with taxpayer funds. So we have a higher standard than if it's your own personal funds or something like that. As elected officials, you do have that responsibility. And with that in mind, you know, we and the state have made sure that you have very stringent requirements. I think the biggest things with the the Pennsylvania Act 10 Investments, and I don't want to get too deep in the weeds for you all, but the investments are require a very, very high credit rating by two independent credit credit rating agencies, Finch, Murray State or S and P and a couple of others, that type of of criteria. And they made the duration of the investments relatively short. To simplify it for some people, what I try to say is if you had, you know, a outstanding company. And then it just started to head downhill, the chances of it coming from great to bad in the time period of your investments is almost miniscule. So that's one. So when the state even put these requirements together, they weren't thinking of a PFM doing the investments. They were thinking of the little town in the central part of the state doing these investments. At PFM, who does the investment work for the Pliggett Trust, we have our own credit committee that meets weekly. Looking at the credits of these companies, we do significant detailed homework with regards to what we are investing in. And because of that, we have a very limited inventory, shall I say. You know, lack of, you know, fancy words, inventory of what we will invest in. So the state may provide, you know, one criteria, PFM and Pliggett dig down deeper, get more information. And it even limit that list to even a smaller list. So I believe that that the, you know, it's been reflected over the course of the last four years. How well the prime or Act 10, the prime and term programs have have done. To give you an example, in 2016, when Act 10 came into fruition, there were some authorities that could invest in a little bit of Act 10 investments and some counties could do some type of investments like Act 10. Pliggett itself might have had 10 million, 15 million invested in Act 10 type of investments. Today, we probably have 60% of all the investments in the trust in Pliggett Prime and or Pliggett Term. And as of this summer, Pliggett itself broke a one of our new, one of our records, which I am proud of to say, we have a over $7 billion of only Pennsylvania local government funds that we are investing for. And with that, probably about 60% are now in either Pliggett Term and or or Pliggett Prime. Or two funds that allow for Act 10 investments. So now again, I just, I'm not, we don't sell anything. If you're interested in continuing to move forward with CDs, I'll be happy to work with Erica on that. I just do want to make sure that the the board is aware that you would probably be looking at, you know, five basis points, maybe eight basis points max, if you're going out for that length of time. Some of the shorter durations, some of the banks don't even want to take it. So if you're looking at you know, under six months, they might not even be interested in taking your funds at all. These are, these are different options. That's why Erica asked me to come on this evening. Knowing that the board historically had gone with FDIC or bank CDs. In our meetings with with Erica and her staff, you know, we have discussed prime and term, and that's what Erica asked me to come in tonight. To go over those two type of of options for you. I guess one of the bigger advantages of the Pliggett Term as CDs, there are fixed rate, fixed term. The 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 dollar volume is not as as significant. So like with CDs, you get four CDs at a million, totally at a million dollars, that's going to bring you down to, like I said, a seven basis points. Going out to September of 2021 in the Pliggett Term Program, we get you 14 basis points. Not a tremendous difference, but it is a difference. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Any other questions for for Paul, either from the board or the public? If the public has questions, please unmute yourself. Paul, you did a good job.
I want to thank you. If you know, if you're all like me, I'm going to hang up and you're going to go, oh, I wanted to ask him that question. Please, you know, let Erica know she'll get ahold of me tomorrow. I'll get to your answer and you can have it before the end of the year. All right.
Very good. Thank you, Paul.
Happy New Year. Hopefully 2021 is significantly better than 2020.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you.
Moving on to subdivision and land development, the Bentley Subdivision. The township is in communication with legal representation for Scott Bentley. Erica, you want to bring us up to speed with what that communication is?
Sure. And I'll just make sure I'm speaking in line with our solicitor, who has been working with legal counsel for Mr. Bentley. I don't believe Mr. Bentley is on the meeting. Please speak up if I am incorrect. I understand as the last communication we had is that there's a desire for the subdivision at this point to be rescinded. Am I correct, Dan, in stating that at this point?
That's correct.
Okay.
He does not want an extension.
Right.
And I did speak with Mr. Baldwin, Mr. Bentley's counsel with respect to the fees. That's primarily what we discussed. The first communication was that he does not want to pursue the subdivision at this point and understands the board is going to reject the subdivision tonight. If you want me to go further with respect to the fees, I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think you you want to do it in public meetings. Is there a litigation matter or?
There could be. I have no problem. I did tell Mr. Bentley that I thought that would be helpful if he was present or and or his counsel. So I do think it should be dealt with initially in public. I think it's important that the minutes reflect what we discussed and what the communication was with Mr. Bentley. Mr. Bentley stated, if you, back in September, he stated that he had an invoice and he had some concerns with respect to the fees. Back on September 18, he appried, he alleges that he apprised Erica. Erica did send him an email as to the procedure to formally, if there is an issue with respect to the fees, what he's to do. If you recall, he did not make a formal objection. There's been no formal communications and frankly, his attorney confirmed today because he didn't present anything, that there was nothing in writing by Mr. Bentley to the township saying he objects to any portion of the of the fees. And in fact, in September, at the end of September, the board did grant him an extension for his request because there were certain issues that were still outstanding, including at that point, there needed to be a. at that point, uh, there needed to be a appraisal of the, of the property uh, to determine uh, what the open space would be for that, that area, if you recall. Ultimately, we don't hear from him for three months. He gets the invoices. And uh, I did reach out to Mr. Baldwin, his attorney, uh, the last few days. Mr. Baldwin tells me that now Mr. Bentley is asserting that the uh, fees he asserts are excessive. But he did not, despite three times today, I asked him, two of them, uh, Eric was on the, I copied per, uh, purposely uh, so that there is no back and forth and there's no confusion and there's no dispute as to what the communications were. Um, I asked him point blank, give me the specifics as to what they're, what's in dispute here. You frankly are beyond the time period anyway, but I'll hear you out. And frankly, as a good faith, I again suggested you pretty much it's to your best interest to appear tonight, which he says he could not do. Bottom line is allegedly, um, I'm going to get something from Mr. Baldwin as to the issues. Um, I told Mr. Baldwin I would communicate with him again after tonight as to what the board wishes, wishes to do. I did tell Mr. Baldwin that most likely the board wouldn't want to do something with respect to the fees once and for all, since they've been outstanding for several months.
Okay, so at this time you're looking for a motion to uh, reject the plan. And you need some kind of consensus on what we're going to do with the, about the fees?
Well, you need to, yeah, you need to reject the plan because he's not met the conditions of the subdivision and um, what LTL had presented as well. So that, yeah, that needs to be done today.
Okay.
And then I think there needs to be an understanding with the board members, uh, what, how you want to proceed with respect to the fees.
Let's do the motion first, and then we'll have a quick discussion on the fees. So looking for a motion to uh, reject the Bentley subdivision plan based on failure by the applicant to, to do what, Dan? What's the wording there?
He, he's failed to meet the conditions set forth by the um, North Coventry subdivision and land development ordinances.
Okay, so that is the motion. Do I have somebody to make that motion?
Slow move.
Rick made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Yep.
And Rebecca seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously to reject the Bentley subdivision plan. Now in regards to the fees, what's the uh, feeling of the board?
Well, I feel he owes the money. Work was done. Was there a developer agreement that was signed? It stipulated everything as far as cost and what was due from him at, at various times?
Yes, there was.
So if there's developer's agreement, and am I correct in the term? He should be following the agreement. If the agreement says that this one's due, I think it's uh, fair that the township receives the money. If there is a dispute, he needs to bring it and discuss it and see what can be done to work it out.
These are fees that pass through the township that went to LTL and whatever other consultants were involved.
Right.
This isn't, this isn't profit coming to the township.
No, and this is money the township has paid already.
Correct. Right. Yep. Anybody else?
If that's the case, that all the money's been passed through, I see no alternative other than to have him pay whatever penalties and costs there is.
So whatever process we would normally use, um, I would, would say that's the uh, the path we take.
I would agree. Anybody else? Dan, do we need a motion to that effect or?
I, I think you should, yes. I think it's important that you do have a motion. It is probably ultimately going to go through. I, I'm assuming that if it means litigation, that you're approving the litigation as well. And the public should know about that, that, that may entail litigation to collect.
So we're authorizing you or Erica to um, to try to recoup the, the fees that are owed to the township. And if litigation is necessary for you to take the appropriate steps to um, commence the litigation.
Correct.
Have a motion to that effect?
Slow move.
Second.
Rick makes a motion. Harvey seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, it's unanimous then. Okay, you have your instructions there, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Moving on to old business, time to adopt the twenty twenty-one budget. Um, budget was duly advertised. We made some minor modifications uh, for accuracy and of the, some of the expenses. Um, and the general fund deficit has been reduced slightly to seventy-three thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Uh, do I have any comments from the board on the proposed budget?
I just want to make a comment that we have not yet had to take money out of our fund to cover deficits and budget. We usually come in on budget or, or do better with the revenue.
And this is the second year in a row that we have not raised taxes.
Any comments from the public on the budget? Hearing none. Okay, there was a resolution nine dash twenty twenty that was in your packet. It's a resolution to approve the proposed budget for twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion um, to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Rebecca makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Harvey seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the budget for twenty twenty-one is approved. New business. Our officer in charge, Matt Diker, is um, requesting the purchase of a new server. Matt, you want to bring us up to speed?
Sure, yeah. Uh, yeah, we are uh, looking to get uh, body worn cameras for the officers. Uh, and while following up on that, uh, speaking with the uh, salesman from uh, WatchGuard, uh, who currently they're the cameras that we have in our cars. Um, the server that we have uh, is not going to work with the, the new cameras that are out there. They, they would work with older cameras, uh, but speaking with the salesman, uh, there, there have been issues with those, uh, and those cameras themselves are getting to the point of being uh, outdated and possibly uh, just, just past their time. Uh, so we're, we're looking to uh, to get a, a server. Uh, we've got a quote here from WatchGuard, um, which is uh, uh, quite less than what the initial server was uh, several years ago. Uh, but it does uh, have the capability of the new cameras that we're looking to uh, to get as well as um, i- integrating the, the camera system that we currently have in the car. So everything would be able to be held on this one new server uh, for us.
Oh, is this expense going into twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one?
Uh, we're looking to do it here in uh, twenty twenty.
Okay. And we have the money still in the budget for twenty twenty, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Questions from the board?
Uh, one question I would have is the cameras we have currently, are they compatible with this? Or do we need to purchase new cameras also?
The cameras that we have currently in the car are also from WatchGuard. So the, so the new cameras that we would purchase uh, are same, are from the same company and compatible. And uh, so uh, when the officers are out and recordings are made, the uh, hopefully the recordings will be seamlessly connected and put together uh, from, from what I've seen and what I, what I've been told. So as long as there's no issues that way, then everything should work out fine.
But I, I guess more directly, my question is the, the body cameras that we had, we only had several of them, maybe two, I believe. Are they compatible and/or are we getting more?
Uh, currently we don't have any body cameras.
Oh, were they on loan before?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Were they on loan before? We did have two.
Yes, yes, that's correct. Yes, several years. We just had a, a couple that we looked at, yes, and had to give them back. So currently we, we don't have any body cameras, but those are the ones that uh, I was told are uh, several years old. Uh, and when we actually looked at them, they were uh, uh, about three years old at that time. So they're kind of getting outdated and they found some issues with uh, the one style that we looked at that had a wire connecting the camera and the battery pack where that wire uh, often got damaged um, just from regular use from officers coming in and out of cars and, and all that kind of thing. They found that wire to be a, a weak link. So they, they changed the cameras around. So it's all one unit now that's, that we just uh, pinned to the officer's uh, 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 outer carrier.
So going, going back to, or my original question, are we going to need to buy then the body cameras?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, we will.
And that'll be at a later date?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there um, any grant money for body cameras?
Yes, there is. Yes. Yes, that, yeah, we have a, we have a quote from uh, WatchGuard for the body cameras. And uh, there's grant money out there for, that cover uh, half the cost.
Okay, good. Any other comments or questions from the board? Any comments from the public or questions from the public? Okay, so hearing none. I'm looking for a motion to authorize the purchase of a new server through WatchGuard in the amount of five thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents to be um, taken from the twenty twenty budget. Do I have a motion?
Slow move.
Rick made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Harvey seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Matt, got the approval. Administration supervisors reports. Rebecca, anything?
No, I don't have anything this time. Thank you.
Rick, anything?
No, nothing for me. Thank you.
Harvey?
Yes, uh, not the right time, but I wasn't quick enough. I think we should say we'll purchase the cameras, not to exceed, okay? The uh, five, whatever the quote was, without prior approval.
That's fine. We can amend that motion up to.
That's all.
And Spencer?
Oh, no, I don't have anything.
All right. Thank you, Spencer. Uh, managers report. Erica?
Thank you. All right, um, just want to thank everyone involved with our first snow event. You could say last of twenty twenty, first of the winter season. Um, we had Public Works Emergency Management and also the municipal authority staff helped us out with that. Uh, that was December sixteenth through the seventeenth of uh, twenty twenty. There are financial update. Uh, we analyzed the performance reports from January first, twenty twenty through November thirtieth, twenty twenty. Total revenue collected at this point uh, is five million uh, eleven thousand dollars. Uh, and that exceeds the annual budget of four million eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, so that is certainly on track. We're very um, thankful that um, revenues uh, caught up and uh, we're looking stable year end here. On the expense side, actual budget figures with total expenses of four million five hundred and thirty-seven thousand represent ninety-two percent of our spending for the period. So we are uh, getting to the end of December here and we'll be doing um, an analysis for year end. And of course, then we'll come, you know, the audit process and what's involved with that. Uh, the township reorganization is coming up here quickly. Uh, we're happy to get those preparations underway for twenty twenty-one. And uh, township offices will be closed Friday, January first uh, to celebrate the New Year holiday. And the reorganization meeting of the township will take place Monday, January fourth at seven PM on Zoom. Uh, while I also have the information as well, the EAC is working towards um, their uh, educational webinar series. They'll have their first one uh, for the uh, winter, and that will be January thirteenth uh, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. And this webinar will be on backyard bird feeding. It'll be presented by Chris Wells of the Valley Forge Audubon Society. And information is posted on the calendar. We'll have some promotional material um, distributed soon. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Dan, solicitor report?
Uh, today we got, in today's mail, we got a um, motion for stay of uh, uh, from uh, Tripodi. Um, frankly, I think that's a positive because if the Superior Court or the Commonwealth Court uh, denies it, which they have in the past, it actually probably promotes Judge Mann and actually uh, proceeding and enforcing the order. And as you remember, that we're in, in limbo here with Mr. Corey uh, placing the property or uh, for sale with a, with a designated bidder. And I understand there were about three that were interested in paying the million plus for the, the property. So I will keep you apprised as to what's transpired with that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dan. Public comment. This is a portion of the meeting where the public gets to uh, comment. If you're going to do so, we ask that you unmute yourself, identify yourself and make your comment.
Hey Jim, it's John Worth. I just, I wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, thank you to Erica for helping us out so much with the EAC webinars that are, that are uh, coming up. It's been wonderful working with her and uh, I would like to see those uh, promoted, you know, on uh, the webpage and on our Facebook page as well. And then, then obviously we've got this first one in January and we're hoping to do these monthly. Actually, we will be doing them monthly. Um, we just need uh, to get the others on the calendar for the several coming months.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Hearing none. Um, in closing, you know, I started this meeting by saying good riddance to twenty twenty, but I think we, we need to look back at some of the things we accomplished in twenty twenty. Because in spite of everything that, that we've all gone through with this pandemic, the township really has been able to achieve some things this year. And there's no doubt I'm leaving them out. I've just been jotting them down while we're sitting here and they were coming to mind. Um, but just, just to hit some of the highlights, first of all, we transitioned to a new manager this year. Um, Erica's done a fantastic job through difficult times. Um, we certainly appreciate what she's done this year and where we're, we're going. We've transitioned. Uh, we've been transitioning towards a new police chief this year, and we look forward to what twenty twenty-one brings for that. We had our first full year in the Public Works Building, um, given our road crew, the, the proper tools that they've needed after years and years of working in a beat-up old garage in the back of the uh, Westmont property. Uh, Parks and Rec built a new playground down at Riverbend Park. Through hard work of, of our volunteers, specifically Patty Worth and um, Cynthia on Parks and Rec did it, just did a great job in pulling that together and getting that done. Our open space review board pushed us over the seven hundred acre uh, mark of, of preserved land. The, the Parvis Hall has, has kick-started again. Um, and thanks to, to the subcommittee at Parks and Rec and, and Erica uh, get neck, kicked forward. We look forward to where that's going next year. Our EAC really stepped up. We have some brand new volunteers on EAC. Um, and as John just said, uh, all the things they have planned for next year. I am sure I'm leaving some out, but there is some things this year that we can really hang our hat on and uh, be proud that we accomplished. Not to forget, we had a major fire in this township this year. Uh, that pulled this community together like no other uh, event could possibly in. Um, through all these difficult times, this township has stepped up. And just want to say thank you to, to all of you. I'm proud of all the work that you do. Uh, thank you for twenty twenty and look forward to twenty twenty-one and continuing uh, that work going forward. So at this time, I'm going to, we are going to have an executive session. I want to thank you again for, for being here. Wish everybody a happy new year. Stay safe, stay smart. At this time, I'm going to ask you to, to log off. We'll see you next week. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Okay, the board has returned from the executive session. No motions or actions were taken. Uh, at this time, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone. Happy New Year.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.